Good morning. Welcome to the Tuesday, July 9th Board of County Commission meeting. We do begin each of our meetings with an invocation. And today we have Ms. Lisa Crump with Church for All Nations to lead us. Please feel free to join us if you would like.
... at, oh, thank you, Garden of the Gods for, I don't know how many times we've been there, but just hearing that there are, how many millions come here every year, Lord? And we have so much company this year. It's just wonderful that people want to come to our beautiful state. And Lord, we pray that there will be safety, protection, and joy while they're here. Lord, for this meeting, we pray that your purposes and your will be done. Lord, we love you and we love our area. Father, we love our country and we thank you for it. Lord, I ask you'll be with each commissioner as they listen and receive things, with each presenter as things are brought forward. We thank you for our first responders. We thank you for all the infrastructure that you've brought here, Lord God. We pray for protection of our road crews as they're out there in such a busy time of year. So, Lord, this is a new day that you have made. We will rejoice and be glad in it. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. And today we will have former El Paso County Commissioner Jim Bensberg lead us in the pledge.
Well, thank you, Madam Chairman. I want to preface this most historic pledge by saying, and taking the advice of another former county commissioner, the late, great Chuck Brown, who reminds us that there is no pause or comma in between one nation under God. He was very specific about that. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number three.
Item number three is staff emergency items, and I'm unaware of any staff emergency items today.
Item number four.
Item number four is consent to appoint deputy district attorneys for a appointment of Cynthia Thomas, Marshall Garrett, and Madeline Sylwagi, Michael Allen, District Attorney.
Mr. Allen.
Morning, Madam Chair, and thank you for the opportunity to appear before the U. Commissioners to present for new, or I'm sorry, three new deputy DAs. I know that Commissioner Gonzalez is especially excited about hearing from the district attorney on this fine Tuesday morning. Isn't that correct, Commissioner? He was teasing me beforehand. So, we have three brand-new attorneys that are doing great work for the Fourth Judicial District. And I want to point out some stats, I guess, that sort of highlight the work that they're doing and the work that the DA's office is doing in a general sense. As we all know, Colorado Springs is the second-biggest city in the state of Colorado. We have the biggest county in the state of Colorado in El Paso County. We also serve Teller County, making up the current Fourth Judicial District. And it wasn't too long ago, maybe a month or so ago, where U.S. News &amp; World Report reported that Colorado Springs is the third-best place to live in the United States. And that is, takes in a bunch of different categories, obviously. But a big part of that, as it relates to what we're doing in the DA's office, is public safety. People would not want to move to an area of the country if they didn't have a strong public safety presence. And we certainly have that here in the Fourth Judicial District. We've got great law enforcement, public servants in police departments and sheriff's offices, both in El Paso and Teller County. And we've got great people like these three who are doing the yeoman's work in the courtroom on behalf of victims every single day. And it's making a difference. It's why our area is so vibrant and is such a favorable place to move to in the country. And we beat out some really unique places in the United States, too, to be at that number-three spot. So, I think it's just noteworthy, and I just want to point that out. So, first, we have Cynthia Thomas. She comes from North Carolina, where she was a deputy DA in North Carolina's Fourth Judicial DA's office. I think that's unique, that she went from the fourth to the fourth. Although this fourth is better than that fourth, in my opinion. She's the first female deputy DA to try a Capitol murder case, I think, in the district that you were in, right? And then she went to law school at Campbell University in North Carolina. She's former Vice President Dan Quayle once stepped on her foot in the Rose Garden. I think very few people can say that. I wonder if he spelled potato or patato when he did that. She's also a watercolor painter, a sailor, which I particularly love, and so does Commissioner Gonzalez, he loves sailors, and a perpetual beginning skier. And then we have Madeline Sylwagi. She went to law school at University of South Dakota. She's an active member of the trial team and part of the inaugural class of Trips Fellows. I have no idea what Trips Fellows means, so maybe you can tell us that in a moment. She did undergrad at St. Louis University in psychology legal studies and interned at Legal Services for Immigrants in St. Louis. Some fun facts about her is that in April, she tried, she got 11 guilty verdicts in court trials over a two-day time span, which is really remarkable. One defendant who had just continued to reoffend. And she did a bunch of bench trials, meaning no jury, but still remarkable achievement. And she also has a deaf dog. That, I don't know, does a deaf dog know sign language? There we go. And then Marshall Garrett, he went to law school at University of New Hampshire for MBA and his Juris Doctorate. He did undergrad at Louisiana State University in Engineering. And he's, like me, an avid fly fisherman. That's why we hired him, in fact. I don't know if you knew that, Marshall, or not. But unlike me, he actually knows how to tie his own flies. I buy mine, he ties his. And again, Commissioner Gonzalez's favorite, he was in the Navy as a seaman. So, I would ask the Board of County Commissioners for consent to appoint these three deputy DAs as deputy DAs here in the Fourth Judicial District, serving both El Paso and Teller County. They're doing great work, as you just heard. They've got really interesting backgrounds, especially their sailor and Navy backgrounds for our commissioner. He asked me to really lay it on thick this morning. In fact, he was sort of tempting me to do that, so that's why I'm doing it a little more than normal. Anyway, I would ask for consent to appoint these three deputy DAs.
Well, thank you. As is our tradition, now is time for roasting a bit. But before I do that, so that I don't forget procedurally, can I get a motion to excuse Commissioner Williams?
I'll make a motion to excuse Commissioner Williams.
Second. That has been moved and seconded. Commissioner Vanderwerf.
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Geitner.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Commissioner Williams is excused for the remainder of the meeting. May the roasting begin. Who wants to start? Commissioner Vanderwerf.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I am going to start off by roasting our district attorney. You know, two-thirds of your selectees this morning are out of the Navy. Are you? Oh, I thought I heard one was a sailor.
Sailor doesn't necessarily mean the Navy, although she certainly is part of that naval tradition.
Okay, but it's still a person that likes water. There you go. I guess, I guess that's the question, where's the Army and the Air Force guys, you know?
Well, I just would remind you, Commissioner, that when we need leadership, we bring the Navy in.
So, obviously, we're going to banter back and forth on that, and neither of us are going to give up on it. I do want to just express my appreciation to the three. Have looked at your resumes, you all have great backgrounds. You're going to do great things here in El Paso County. We're very proud of the work that we do here, despite the challenges that we've had, to ensure that we have public safety here. And you're part of a really great system that's efficient and effective, working in concert with our sheriff's offices for the two counties, but really the broader public safety community as well, which includes, for example, our Public Health Office and our Coroner's Office. It's really a large, broad team. But without having good, effective prosecutors that actually do prosecute, unlike a few other places in the country, without that, this would not work. So, thank you for joining the team. I really look forward to working with you, hearing great things. And I appreciate what I've seen in the resumes and the work that you all have done in the past. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gonzalez.
Well, I just want to thank you all. I think the backgrounds are amazing. I think you're going to do a great job for us and for our community. And it was very interesting, the fourth, the fourth was awesome. And then the, all the convictions in two days, wow. That's pretty amazing. And so, thank you. And kind of interesting background with engineering, I think, that you said before, became a lawyer. So, I think you're going to add great things for us. I'll just mention, I know the district attorney likes to mention his military naval background. I'm very humble, and so I don't like to bring those kind of things up very often. And so, I'll try to stick to being humble, as I always am. But you did mention Dan Quayle, so I'll just throw the one, I did get to meet him and shake his hand when he spoke at the Air Force Academy graduation back in 1992, which I got to do. So, oh, oh, I'm sorry, I was going to try to stay humble, but.
Well, I would just point out that I didn't graduate from the academy, I'm a working man.
This could go on for days. Commissioner Geitner.
Thank you. So, hidden talent of our district attorney is his sense of humor, I think. So, always pleased to see the tremendous folks that come for this board and really grateful that you've decided to join the Fourth Judicial. As I always like to say, you know, you have a great boss. And this is truly an area in Colorado that I believe is still very unique, that we continue to fight for justice for victims, even in the face of some not-so-fantastic state legislation, which we all are very concerned about and will continue working towards. But we appreciate you being here to uphold the laws that are in place that I think is not always happening around the rest of Colorado. I think it makes a difference to our residents, the safety of our community. And oftentimes, when we hear about public safety, folks think about our law enforcement specifically. And they don't think about the jobs that you all are doing, because most of them don't interact with you. They don't see you out on the street like they do our law enforcement. But you are 100% a very key part of what keeps our community safe. So, thank you. And my question that I always love to ask, because I find this fascinating, is, from a group of attorneys, is what is your favorite law-themed book, show, movie? Would love to hear about that.
I think mine is Law &amp; Order. And my least favorite was the one that Andy Griffith was in, because, what was that? Matlock. Because Law &amp; Order, it actually follows a lot of what the law is. And being in North Carolina, you can't get up out of your seat when you question a witness. And Andy Griffith used to walk right up to the witnesses, and it used to drive me crazy. So, that would be mine.
So, my favorite law book is My Grandfather's Son by Clarence Thomas. And I think it's just the American dream, coming from a family of indigent servants to a Supreme Court Justice.
My favorite movie, even though it's not factually accurate, is My Cousin Vinny. It has to be.
So, I think we've gotten a couple of My Cousin Vinny's over the time, which is funny. There's a line in there about grids, which I know the Southerners always remember and is quoted many times at my house. Matlock is a new one, so that was a blast from the past. I used to watch that when I was a kid, so now I'll never be able to watch it again in the same way. Thanks for that. And I really appreciate it, it was a great book. I also read that and have a great deal of respect for Clarence Thomas. So, thank you for sharing just a little bit about yourself. It's always very insightful.
Thank you. And my colleagues have said it so well. We are so grateful for the district attorney's office and glad to have you joining the team. You have a great leader, you have many great leaders over there. And I'm excited to read your resumes. In particular, Madeline, I want to read your essay on incarceration, reducing recidivism, enhancing education, and creating community. That is, I mean, that is really, you know, community problems can be solved sometimes at a justice level, and sometimes it takes entire other systems. And you guys are a huge piece of that. But I love, I love the mindset that you come into this narrow scope of public safety knowing that it's a much bigger community. So, I'm sure that all of you bring that and grateful to have you. With that, any final comments before a vote?
I did one, I did one, it's just on the serious note, the district attorney did mention how, you know, rated third in the country because of our, you know, support of public, public safety. It goes back to prosecuting and being willing, being willing to prosecute, which means you have to bring in additional personnel. But that's one of the things that I think community like ours does. And we see around the country where some communities don't, and we've seen the negative results. So, that's just a great example of what's going on here in our community, our willingness to hold people accountable, to prosecute. And with that, of course, means we have to have good, strong additional personnel as well. So, thank you for being willing to do that and doing it well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Vanderwerf.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is for the engineer, but also for all of you. So, one quick quote from My Cousin Vinny. "Are you telling me that the laws of physics cease to exist on your stove?" So, that's for the engineer, thank you very much.
With that, is there a motion to approve these appointments? Still moved. Is there a second?
Second.
That has been moved and seconded. Any further comments? Okay, Commissioner Vanderwerf.
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Geitner.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That passes 4-0 with Commissioner Williams excused. Congratulations.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Commissioners, for unanimous approval.
Thank you. I think I have an unruly group this morning. Okay, that brings us now to item number five.
Item number five is changes, postponements, and notice of the next meeting. I'm unaware of any changes or postponements to today's agenda. And the next meeting will be Tuesday, July 23rd, at 9:00 a.m.
Item six.
Item number six is the consent calendar, consisting of items 6A through 6D-6.
Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on any item on today's consent calendar? Hearing none in the room and none online. Thank you, Nancy. Commissioners, questions, comments, motion?
Move approval of the consent calendar?
Second.
That has been moved and seconded. Any further comments? Commissioner Vanderwerf.
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Geitner.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That passes 4-0. Item number seven.
Item number seven is the proclamation recognizing the retirement of Melanie Sheridan, Stan Vanderwerf, Commissioner, Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know if there might be a few that are coming down to speak, but if you could make your way down while I read the proclamation, that would be outstanding. So, I would like to make a motion for the proclamation recognizing the retirement of Melanie Sheridan. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of El Paso County, Colorado, regretfully acknowledges the retirement of Melanie Sheridan after 25 years of faithful and dedicated service to El Paso County. And whereas Ms. Sheridan was hired in September of 1999 and has served in the clerk and recorder's office in various roles over her career, most recently as a motor vehicle technician, where she assisted our citizens of El Paso County with their motor vehicle needs and requirements at the clerk and recorder's office. And whereas Ms. Sheridan has served six county clerks, was a counter-trainer, and was awarded Leader of the Quarter during the third quarter of 2018. Melanie assisted in training her new motor vehicle staff and comes to work with a positive attitude, teamwork, and outstanding customer service skills. And whereas Mrs. Sheridan's dedication and professionalism has significantly contributed to the successful operation of the clerk and recorder's office. And whereas this proclamation is presented to Mrs. Sheridan to serve as a reminder that although she is retiring, she will always be remembered and as a valued employee, dedicated to both her position and our community. Now, therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of El Paso County, Colorado, hereby proclaims its gratitude to Melanie Sheridan for her 25 years of outstanding service and dedication to El Paso County and its residents. Done this ninth day of July, 2024, at Colorado Springs, Colorado, the Board of County Commissioners of El Paso County, Colorado, signed Kami Bremer Chair, Carrie Geitner Vice Chair, Lahinos Gonzalez Jr., Stan Vanderwerf, and Holly Williams Members, and attested to and signed by Steve Schleicher, the county clerk and recorder. And you may have a few that wish to speak at this time. Oh, actually, may I have a second?
I will second that motion.
Thank you. Now, if you have anybody that would like to speak, thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Kristi Riddlin. I'm the Deputy Chief Clerk and Recorder. Our clerk and recorder cannot be here this morning, so I'm happy to be here in his place. And I would like to read a brief statement that Steve wrote in honor and celebration of Melanie's retirement. Dear Melanie, congratulations on your retirement. Everyone on the team will miss you, but we are excited about your journey. I can't tell you how much I've enjoyed working alongside you for the past 19 months as your clerk and recorder. You have always been dependable, loyal, and an empathetic member of the clerk and recorder family. I look back at our time working together fondly. Whether it was you wanting to get to know me better and asking the hard questions my very first day and picking my brain at our all-staff town hall, I'm hoping I pass the test. I, too, have enjoyed getting to know you. I wish you the best in your future endeavors. Please keep in touch as you go into your retirement. I would love for you to continue texting to hear about all the exciting things you plan to do. Congratulations, Steve. And I echo that. You've been amazing to work with the past seven years that I've been with the office in getting to know you. And I can't thank you enough for your dedication over the past 25 years. And congratulations.
It's been a pleasure working for the clerk and recorder for the last 25 years. So, I've learned a lot from everyone, and I'm really going to miss it. But good things is going to happen, so thank you for everybody's support.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak on this? So, you've got friends and family and coworkers here. And I know that's indicative of how highly they think of you and how grateful they are of your service. I, too, am incredibly grateful for 20, 25 years. I don't want to date myself, but I'm... I don't want to date myself, but I might have been in high school when you started here. And that is just, that's amazing, the commitment, the loyalty, the commitment to serving our citizens, probably at not some of their best moments, when they're frustrated at having to come check the box with, with one thing or another in the clerk and recorder's office. So, thank you for the way in which you've served our citizens wholeheartedly and for, for serving under six different county clerks. Now, if we multiply that times five, you've probably served under 30, you know, 30, 35 different commissioner directions as well. And to be able to, to keep service at front of mind through all that transition is just incredible. With that, any other comments? Commissioner Gonzalez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to thank you. 25 years, yeah, that is a lot. And it's like, I might have been in high school, too. I'm not sure. No, I'm just kidding. You didn't have to say it out loud, Brett.
Sorry.
But, no, but, you know, I served 20 years in the military, and that seemed like a long time, where I greatly appreciated and loved my 20 years. 25, it's amazing when I see staff that have gone through, do 20, 25, 30, I think we even had 35 years before. But it's amazing, this dedication that you've shown for our community, and I just greatly appreciate it. Thank you, and enjoy retirement.
Commissioner Geithner.
Thank you. As everyone has said, 25 years is, is obviously something to celebrate. We really thank you for your service. And even more than that, I just wish you the best as you enter into your retirement. I'm sure you have lots of fantastic plans and well-deserved. And we just wish you the best and hope that it is filled with all kinds of new adventures.
Commissioner Vanderwerf.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As is our tradition, I'll, I'll close the Commissioner comments as the reader of the proclamation. I also want to thank you for your service, your dedicated service to the citizens of El Paso County, and express similar words to the sentiments of my fellow colleagues. You know, on the one hand, 25 years seems like a long time. On the other hand, and I served 28 years in the Air Force. On the other hand, it really goes fast. But when it goes fast, it means that you were having fun and you were really enjoying what you're doing. I'm sure that was the experience that you had. And, you know, 25 years of service to a community, that's really something that you and anybody else can be proud of. I'm just so grateful that, that you did that. We all know that pay for the county is okay, maybe not outstanding. But at the same time, serving with friends and that also are dedicated to really, you know, helping the community, that's a great thing. And that really is so much more valuable, I think. So, you do have some friends here. I don't know how many in the audience here are going to your retirement party, but I imagine that you're going to have one, or maybe you just recently had one. But to the same points that my fellow colleagues made, I hope that you really enjoy your retirement. And maybe I could ask you just one last question. What is the one or two big things you're going to do in retirement? What are the things you've been longing to do?
Travel and spend a lot of time with my family, so, because life is too short, so.
That's outstanding, yeah. Yeah, I think it's pretty common to say spend more time with the family. That's something I think we all have an interest in doing, all of us that are in professional life wish to do that. And travel, that's outstanding, yeah. There's, I'm sure you're going to go to some cool places. You'll have to tell us later where you're going. Thank you very much. Madam Chair, those are my comments, and thank you again for your service.
Okay, with that, we will take a vote. Might be a dicey one. And then after that, we'll take a brief recess if you'd like to get a picture. Okay. Commissioner Vanderwerf.
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Geithner.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Congratulations. That passes 4-0. Congratulations. We will be in recess. Good morning, and welcome back to the Tuesday, July 9th, meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. We are on item number eight.
Item number eight is comments by elected officials and commissioner liaison reports.
Okay, seeing no countywide elected officials in the audience and none online, we will begin with Commissioner Vanderwerf.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So, just some very brief things for my calendar for this week. I'll have the Pike's Peak Area Council of Governments meeting tomorrow morning, and then the Park Advisory Board tomorrow afternoon. And then later on this week, along with some of my fellow commissioners, we'll be attending the NACO National Convention in Tampa, Florida. And this will be my last convention to go to as a county commissioner. And I have, we have several resolutions that we are hoping to get passed, the board, to turn into NACO national positions. The two that I am sponsoring, the first one is a resolution asking Congress, asking the President and, President and his administration to work with Congress to reduce federal spending so that we can have a little bit better balance, a little bit, a little bit less inflation and so forth and so on. I think it's important for our constituents to keep fighting for that. And then the second one is a resolution asking the President to direct the EPA to separate ozone, locally-produced ozone production from ozone that comes from other regions, because right now the EPA has a policy to hold local communities accountable for all ozone levels, whether we produce it ourselves or not. It turns out that there is a growing interest in this position to separate these two out here in the western states, because, because at higher altitudes, a lot of the ozone is background ozone that just simply comes from being at a higher altitude. So, in this particular case, we do have four governors from four western states that are supporting this. Two of those governors are Republicans, two of those governors are Democrats, and one of the governors that is supporting this request to separate the ozone between background radiation and the locally-produced radiation is our own governor, Governor Polis. And in fact, recently, he sent a letter to the President specifically asking for this separation. So, what we're hoping to do at the NACO National Convention is get a resolution for a NACO support of the same thing. And then after that, we'll just be back at our next board meeting here in Colorado Springs. And I don't know if we'll get an opportunity to talk about it, but I'm also looking forward to participating in the county fair, which is coming up, 13 to 20 July. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gonzalez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I hope all got to enjoy a wonderful Independence Day and a nice weekend this past week. It was a lot of great events, and then even got to go to the, well, I went to the parade on, last week up in Monument, but also got to go to the rodeo parade kickoff. We did have the stick horse competition, a lot of little kids running around. They also had a section for elected officials and the Fair Queens, the Girls of the West. The Girls of the West defeated all the elected officials, but I still put in a good effort. So, that was, that was fun. Do have a PPRTA tomorrow meeting. Also, I'll be attending the rodeo, Pike's Peak Road Bus Rodeo, which kicks off tonight, today, tonight. So, I'll be attending tomorrow. Then I hope everybody gets out to the county fair this and next week. Looking forward to catching that next week as well. And I believe that's, oh, and I did get to attend the sheriff's promotion ceremony yesterday. Nice event, getting to see three deputies promoted to sergeant and one getting promoted to lieutenant. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Geithner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's a busy week. As has already been mentioned, I will be participating in the PPRTA meeting. In addition to the fair kicking off this weekend, there's also a little tradition in Calhan called the Calhan Summer Fest, which is on the eve of the kickoff of the fair. So, I encourage everyone to go and participate in that as well. I will also be participating specifically in the new Fair Queen judging this weekend as well. We also have a citizens outreach group meeting on Monday morning. Actually, Wednesday, out at the fairgrounds at Swing Call, I will actually have a town hall as well. And I think our DA has left, but I believe our DA is participating as well, possibly the sheriff's office as well. And so, we invite you, if you're out at the fairgrounds, to come in and talk to your elected officials as well and have that opportunity. I also want to just briefly talk about, as Commissioner Vanderwerf talked about, the NACO priorities. I will not be going to NACO, because I will be staying to participate fully in the fair activities, as often is the case. There are only five of us, and so we do kind of split up where we are to try to be able to be as many places as possible. So, I will be holding down the fort, so to speak, at the fair next week. But also, as important as the NACO priorities are, we're also in the process of working through our Colorado Counties Inc. priorities for the legislative session next year. And just want to briefly talk about a couple of the things that we're looking at there. One is encouraging the legislature to remove the bag fee. I think we all know that costs continue to rise in Colorado. It's one more fee that really is not producing a whole lot and really isn't doing a lot for the benefit of citizens. So, I think it's time to roll that back, and so we'll be submitting that. We would also be submitting a priority related to reform that is preventing things like condos from being purchased, entry-level homes that are needed in our community. Specifically, on that one, you know, I'm concerned that the state has continued to try and take over local authority and made a lot of statements and, and put forward a lot of bills that are related to reducing local control, as if that is the issue with affordable housing in Colorado. However, I take some issue with that. I do think that it's time for the state to take those steps on making sure that those entry-level homes can be built. It's important to do that, as well as looking at some of the green energy regulations that are consistently driving up the cost of homes here in Colorado. And then the third one is courthouse funding. You know, the, the courthouse is full of folks that the state send to us, and it falls on the county to make sure that they're housed. And so, we're, you know, looking to the state to, to actually fulfill that role a little bit. So, those are some of the things that we're going to be submitting, working on those this week with our government affairs staff, and looking forward to, to getting those. And then lastly, I just wanted to address some questions that I got as one of the library liaisons. Some folks reached out to me about a news segment that they saw that seemed to, seemed to folks to be saying that there would possibly be a tax increase on, on property taxes coming from the library. I just want to share that I spoke with several library board members that is not in the works currently. They, they have not said that that is something they are looking to do. There are some questions. There was a facilities report. The current board commissioned that facilities report to get a good handle on what was going on with their branches, with the libraries, what the needs are in the community. They're working very diligently to really look at how they are governing and make good, smart business decisions. But there have been no decisions made on that, and I think that that report was probably a little premature and probably made a few people concerned about a property tax increase, which we know residents are already suffering underneath the, you know, increases that we've already seen. So, just wanted to provide a little bit of feedback on that for my colleagues or anyone else in the public who may have seen that segment.
Thank you, Commissioner. I, too, have a very busy week before leaving for NACO later this week. I, amongst the other things mentioned, I also, tomorrow morning, will be participating in, in a press conference about the release of, of an online platform to help citizens be able to directly access some mental health resources. So, super excited about that tomorrow morning. And then the rodeo does begin. I will also try to squeeze that in one evening before departing for NACO. And then at NACO specifically, as a member of the And then at NACO specifically, as a member of the, as a vice chair actually, of the Human Services and Education Committee, I will be moderating a panel on human services delivery during a natural disaster, which considering a large part of our country was just impacted by the first and a very early natural disaster in the form of a hurricane just this week. I expect that to be a lively discussion and I just, I really enjoy offering the public policymakers perspective as I moderate that panel. There are lots of boots on the ground and public and civil servants that actually do that human services delivery. But I very much enjoy offering the policy, the bigger policymaking picture as I do that. And I'm excited to represent El Paso County in that. And unfortunately, as you all know, our region has suffered from natural disasters here before in the form of floods and fires. And so I think we have a little bit to offer there sadly, but perhaps it can help some other communities recover as well as our community has. With that, any other comments? Okay, item number eight. Sorry, item number nine.
Item number nine is community service organization reports and there are none.
Item 10.
Item number 10 is public comment on items not scheduled on the agenda. This is the public's opportunity to speak on an item that is not scheduled on today's agenda. And Madam Chair, we didn't have anyone sign in ahead of time to speak.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone here to speak on any item not on today's agenda? If you would please sign in, state your name, and your three minutes will begin.
Turn the button on. Very good. Good morning. My name is Andrew Dolby. I'm a lifelong citizen of Colorado Springs and El Paso County. As you all know, I have not been sparing in my criticism of this board when I felt that you were doing things incorrectly. But today, I'd like to say thank you for being significantly better than city council. So as you know, city council is very divided at the moment and eating their own. Because rather than representing the citizens, there's a, well, there's a lot of other influences that are happening. With that in mind, again, thank you for being semi-sane. But I'd like you to consider investigating whether you, as a board of county commissioners, it's appropriate and/or you have the authority to set certain standards in place. One of those standards, as we talked about, emergency evacuation and such. I was affected by the Waldo Canyon fire, came within a couple hundred yards of my house. I know many of you have that, have a very, are very concerned about such issues. There is, of course, the proximate issue that caused division in city council is the, is a densification on the west side where there is inadequate infrastructure to evacuate effectively. Since you're in charge of emergency responsiveness within the county, perhaps there's a, something you could do to limit the over densification where it's impossible to get people out in a reasonable period of time. I know many of my neighbors were, I was fortunate that I was evacuated fairly early from Waldo Canyon, but many of my neighbors were stuck in their cars in traffic, watching the fire right side, right outside their vehicles. Of course, we did lose a couple of lives in that situation. Overloading the major arterias, arterials out of the west side, as they already are overloaded, putting more densification in that area is obviously an unwise situation. Perhaps you could see if there's something you can do to protect the citizens and to mitigate against unwise excessive density in areas that are vulnerable to natural disasters and which it is impractical to get out of in a timely fashion. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak on any item not on today's agenda? Okay, hearing none in the room and none online. Thank you, Nancy. That brings us then to item number 11.
Item number 11 is the called-up consent calendar and there are no items called up.
Item number 12.
Item number 12 is the resolution to approve the 2024 Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program. Crystal Latier, Executive Director, Economic Development Department.
Good morning, Commissioners. Crystal Latier, Executive Director of Economic Development. Thank you to our AV crew that is pulling up the PowerPoint now. All right. Thank you for your time this morning to discuss a matter related to the Community Development Block Grant Program, specifically related to our 2024 Annual Action Plan. So a quick program overview, many of you are familiar with the Community Development Block Grant Program or what we call the CDBG program. The CDBG program is a fairly flexible federally-funded program through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. It's been a program that's been around since 1974. However, El Paso County became what is known as an entitlement community in 2009. So what does that mean? In 2009, our population in El Paso County, but outside the city limits of Colorado Springs, reached a threshold of over 200,000 and a certain percentage of those folks were of low to moderate income. So we started to receive a direct allocation of this federal grant to El Paso County. Why that's worked out well is it's helped with that local control piece, right? That money comes directly to El Paso County. We are closest to the people and our needs and so we can allocate that as we see appropriate. Additionally, it puts technical assistance right here in your staff at El Paso County that helps our other local rural municipalities and nonprofit entities that are applying to use some of this funding. As mentioned before, this is a U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development program with the primary purpose of serving persons of low to moderate income. So all those activities that we undertake with this grant funding have to serve that purpose. As well, we can conduct what we call a consolidated plan. It's essentially a five-year strategic plan where we survey community needs and look at what are our greatest community needs that align with eligibility under this program and develop a set of goals that help guide us in recommending to you all how the funding should be used for the next five years. Then each year, we develop what is called the Annual Action Plan. That's what we're presenting here today, the recommendations in that action plan that says, with this annual allocation, these are applicants we received that we are recommending that again fall in line with those consolidated plan goals as well as those federal regulations. And speaking of federal regulations, federally-regulated programs are not for people faint of heart. So I did want to give a quick shout out to our incredible team here. You likely hear me refer to them as our small but mighty team, but we have several staff members in the audience today and just thank them for their hard work as we administer this program daily and service of our community. So, thank you. As mentioned, these were the goals that are currently part of our 2022 through 2026 Consolidated Plan. They align with HUD priorities as well as community needs and federal eligibility. So how does our process work? On an annual basis, we call for applications so local municipalities can apply for these fundings. I would be remiss if I didn't point out that our funding must be used outside the city limits of Colorado Springs. Why? The city receives their own direct allocation. So they receive CDBG and use that inside the city limits. So the projects that are eligible for our funding are those that are either outside the city limits or perhaps it's a nonprofit that's housed inside the city limits but does access those rural populations and provide services to them and they have to clearly document that through intake process to ensure the funding is going where it is mandated. So on an annual basis, we open up the applications to our seven outlying municipalities as well as nonprofits and other service organizations serving residents who live in El Paso County outside the city limits. We receive all those applications. As you all know, there is always, seems to be more need than resource. So we have an incredible group known as the Community Development Advisory Board. You'll see them listed here. This is a great group of 12 members, volunteers. How that's comprised is you have a member from each of your five county commissioner districts as well as one member from each of those local municipalities. So we really get the true voice of all the community needs and things happening across our very expansive county. And so again, wanted to say thank you to this incredible group of volunteers that reviews those applications and comes up with a list of recommendations on how that funding should be used. Would also like to point out that Commissioner Williams serves as our commissioner liaison. Unfortunately, she is absent from today's meeting but was participating in the review process up to this point. We now find ourselves at kind of that step three that you see there when we are providing the recommendations to you and you all review those recommendations. And please know that the final purview of funding approval lies with the Board of County Commissioners. Once we have those final approvals, we submit that in what we call our Annual Action Plan up to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for final approval and then we get started on those projects. Again, there's many other steps along the way, including environmental reviews and legal contracts. But we are here today to present those recommendations. So I'll quickly go through those recommendations. We have 10 for you today. The first category, we have five categories in which someone could apply. The first category is what we refer to as public service. This is essentially our nonprofit category. By the federal definition, this is where nonprofits can apply. Caveat to keep in mind is that federal requirements allow only 15% of our total allocation to be expended in this section or this category. Another important note is a kind of an internal rule that we've developed here in El Paso County. And that is that any nonprofit agency in this category can receive CDBG funding from El Paso County for up to two years in a row and then must take a one-year waiting period. Why we think that is important is because this ensures that none of our local agencies become dependent upon federal funds that may or may not exist in the future. It helps with capacity building within our own region. So it's a rule that served us well. You will see there are four projects that we are recommending for funding this year. The first one, Community Partnership for Childhood Development, or CPCD. This will provide supportive behavioral health and developmental services for children in rural areas. Forge Evolution is an expansion of their behavioral health services program, again for teens that live outside the city limits but access those services. Project Angel Heart provides meals, free in-home meals delivered for income-eligible residents within our jurisdiction. And then Serenity Recovery Connection, which would provide support services for substance abuse victims and their families in rural areas. The next two categories that we have recommendations for you are economic development and public facilities. In the economic development category, we're recommending the Exponential Impact through their Survive and Thrive program be provided CDBG funding. The Survive and Thrive program is probably something already on your radar that this program has done some great work inside the city limits. But we've worked with Exponential Impact to identify that there is need for businesses and entrepreneurship happening outside the city limits within our jurisdiction. So that funding again would be for that area. Additionally, in the public facilities category, we're recommending allocation for the Ellicott Open Door Church so that they can make some ADA accessibility renovations to their building. What I wanted to point out here is in rural areas, we really see churches and schools acting as community hubs. So the Ellicott Open Door Church does a lot of community programming that's open and accessed by all. And so these ADA improvements would be great for the, great events happening for the community in that rural area. The last two categories are infrastructure and housing. So you'll denote here three infrastructure recommendations as well as one housing. For the infrastructure, we are recommending a Phase 2 of Bonita Drive down in Fountain. These again are income-eligible. So when we're looking at infrastructure projects, and it's important to keep in mind, how do we meet that low to moderate income requirement? We look at census-designated areas and look at the census information for those census tract block groups that show that this is an area of need. Fountain has been obviously a longtime partner with her program and has done some great work. And they do that very strategically and pair it with other city improvements that they're doing for a great holistic approach. You'll also note Town Rema, they will be doing some street drainage improvements. We've had the opportunity to work in this very rural community for several years with CDBG. And so this will be another infrastructure project that accompanies some great work that's already happened in years past. Point out that we are also recommending an internal project, the Wide Field Community Park ADA Phase 3. I will say when we are presenting across the community about the great way in which we've used CDBG funds to help our region, the Wide Field Community Park is one that always comes up from residents directly. So this is obviously, can't speak highly enough about our own Internal Parks team and the great, great work that they do, many national awards, but they have really taken a holistic approach to how they are looking at that Wide Field Community Park and the ADA improvements and other things they are doing in that area. I will say we're wrapping up a CDBG video right now that we'll be putting on our website, kind of a quick five-minute video that highlights some of the great work over the past years that this funding's been able to do. And when we were down in this area filming specifically a clip about work that's happened there, residents have come up and just thanked us for the work that's done and how it's impacted their families. So it's always great to hear directly from residents and see when all that federal paperwork does something good in our community. And then lastly, wanted to highlight Brothers Redevelopment, which is a great entity. It's headquartered in the Denver area but has been a longtime partner with El Paso County and most recently also with the city of Colorado Springs. Why we think this is such an important program is, as you all know, affordable housing continues to be a topic that we talk about throughout the community. This program specifically provides grant assistance to income-eligible families that either had some kind of ADA need or emergency health and safety improvement. So what we see a lot is that this really allows folks to age in place, which is a really important part of our housing continuum, as you know, with our current housing market. So it's a longstanding partner of our program and our community and they do incredible work that really helps with addressing a specific entity or a specific section of that affordable housing continuum that we always are looking at. So in summary, what's being recommended, you will see our 10 projects and totaling about $914,097. You'll see some additional funding statistics here related to this round of applicants. And we do have some representatives from our financial services offices as well. You know, whenever we're looking at one program in the county, as you all know, El Paso County has a pretty big purview. So it's very important to us that we are strategically allocating money. So what that means is when we receive applications, we coordinate closely with financial services to look at other ways in which they are receiving El Paso County's support. And so that happened via existing ARPA, American Rescue Plan commitments, as well as a new program that's kind of been stood up in our area and that's opioid council. And so we had some additional information come from our team members there that we did want to highlight, information that was not available to the Community Development Advisory Board from a pure timing perspective. So the Community Development Advisory Board did know that the opioid council and the great work that was happening there was happening, but their recommendation process had concluded before the finalization of that program. And so I'll probably ask our chief financial officer, Nikki Simmons, to come up, but did want to highlight that a pretty sizable grant from that program has been given to one of our recommended categories, one of our recommended activities. So that would be new information for everyone.
Good morning, Commissioners. Nikki Simmons, Chief Financial Officer. The one thing we wanted to add to this presentation that happened after the Community Development Advisory Board met was through the Region 16 Opioid Abatement Council, so I think it's Serenity Recovery Connection, received a $362,299 award through that, through that group, which El Paso County facilitates. El Paso County facilitates and we're the fiscal agent for. That grant was for the same items that were included in the recommended award from the Community Development Block Grant. And so that is the same items, and we wanted to make sure that that information was available to you all as you make final recommendations. That information was not available to the CDAB board when they were making their recommendations.
Okay, thank you. Any questions regarding that?
Then how much was Serenity's level here for the board? I'm sure you have it.
Actually, I do have a spreadsheet that we worked with the Economic Development Department on to show all of the grants that were applied for, the advisory board recommendation, and then today in this session, we'll be filling out this final column for the final amount as determined by the Board of County Commissioners.
So I think the answer there is 25,000. Commissioner Geithner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Really appreciate all the work that goes into this with thoroughness, especially as there's been a lot of attention paid to all these various funding streams and making sure that we are, you know, spreading that among the community in the most effective way. So thank you for your work on this. Appreciate the conversation of the, obviously, sitting on the Opioid Council. I did know about those additional funds that were going to Serenity and understand that, you know, that information just was not previously available to the advisory board. I would suggest to my colleagues that because of the nature of that very large amount, over $300,000, to Serenity Recovery Connection that was not available to the advisory board, I'd like to suggest that rather than providing additional funding to that same organization, that we look at providing that in a different area. I would love to suggest that we look at that for Brothers Redevelopment. I think we all know that, in particular, the increases in property tax have really hit our seniors very hard, those on a fixed income, and so it's become very difficult for them to continue to age in place. I think this is one more way that we can help seniors in that capacity and help to make sure that they have the resources that they need to be able to age in place. So that would be my suggestion for a change on, again, from that Serenity Recovery Connection because of the additional funding. They've received substantial funding from another stream to move that over to Brothers Redevelopment. And, well, sorry, if I could finish. And not over their request, because I'm sure that's what you were going to add. So the 25 doesn't completely, so it would fulfill their request, and then my understanding is we'd have about 8,000-ish in reserve that we could just kind of hold on to for the time being and look at that into our next funding cycle.
Correct. The contingency left over if you funded Brothers Redevelopment at the 125,000 would be $8,956. That could be held in a contingency fund for any applicant that might need that. There's a very specific and legal process we would go through. If it wasn't allocated, it would just be rolled into our next set of recommendations. It would not go back to HUD. It'll stay here and remain in local control.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I know that you were gonna make sure that I got that piece.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too am supportive of the recommendation. Just want to clarify for the public, we are allowed to move dollars from one section to other sections, or at least in this case, I know it couldn't go the other direction because, but I just double-check for the public that that's authorized.
That is correct, Commissioner. In the Community Development Block Grant, we have a cap of 15% that can go in this blue category here for public services, but there is not a cap that can go into the either items, and so we are allowed to move money out of public services. While everything here is actually public services, that's a very clearly defined thing in the Community Development Block Grant, so we're able to move things down into this housing category. So if we moved to the maximum of their request at 125,000, that would move $16,044 to Brothers And I can start filling in the rest of these.
While you're doing that, Commissioner Vanderwerf, did you have a few comments?
Yes, thank you. I think also I would be interested in supporting the recommendation. I just wanted, by the time you complete the calculations here, you're probably going to answer the question that I had, which was at the Brothers Redevelopment, okay, so you've already done it. It was taking that 8,956 from Brothers, adding the 25K in, making a total of 125, and then leaving the 8,956 as a reserve. So that, the 8,956, you might have mentioned it, but I didn't maybe catch it, that that was coming out of the Brothers Redevelopment Fund and then adding the 25K in, or what was originally proposed.
I believe, Commissioner Vanderwerf, the removal of the 25,000 from Serenity Recovery Connection allows us to put $16,044 more dollars to Brothers Redevelopment, and that remaining 8,956 is the contingency. So essentially, nothing was taken from Brothers Redevelopment, was just added to, if that clarifies.
I understand that, yeah. We were saying it two different ways but saying the same thing. Yes, thank you. And I do appreciate, actually, the new information that was provided. I believe that Serenity Recovery does great work, and I just want to acknowledge the great work that they do with that large amount of funding that they're getting from the Opioid Council. They're going to be able to do some really, really good work with those dollars. And it is important to make sure that we do the best we can, knowing that those funds are going to them, to do the best we can to balance all of this. And it does seem to me that what Brothers Redevelopment is doing is going to be really helpful for this home repair program for the purposes already stated on the record to help people stay in their homes. So I think that I will also be willing to accept the recommendation.
Commissioner Geithner.
Madam Chair, if it's okay with you, then I would like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the recommendations with the change noted of adding the additional funds to Brothers Redevelopment and the remainder being held in a contingency.
And I'm happy to second that.
Okay, that has been moved and seconded. I did have some final comments, and that's just that, you know, with any federal funding stream, there are a lot of reporting requirements, and I think in this case, you know, balancing what has been offered to a single organization that is doing great work, I think balancing that out will actually allow that organization in particular to not necessarily worry about where the work needs to be done. They now have a much broader scope in which to operate, really here and Teller County, correct, for the Opioid Council. So I am okay with that recommendation. And then I also wanted to highlight the, on that note of requirements and reporting, you see several organizations listed on this spreadsheet that are kind of, they're faded out, but they were listed on that final slide sheet listing all of the applicants. You will see that some were not recommended for funding, and most of that did have to do with their ability to record and track that the money could be used specifically under the guidelines for this grant and specifically in unincorporated El Paso County. That is a difficult thing when other existing systems are already in place. So I think that this, I think that the advisory board and our staff have done a wonderful job of helping us sort through how to get the most impact out of this. I am excited to support the motion on the table. And with that, any other comments? Okay. And just for clarification, this does require a motion. Can we just have it that we are allocating according to the spreadsheet being done here?
I'll look to our clerk to see if the motion was sufficient or if I need to make changes.
I think the motion is sufficient as it noted the change to Brothers Redevelopment and the rest as contingency, but we'll make sure we have the sheet for the record.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, with that, I will call the roll. Commissioner Vanderwerf.
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Geithner. And the chair votes aye. That passes 4-0 with Commissioner Williams excused. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your support.
Item number 13.
Item number 13 is department and committee reports, non-action items, and there are none.
Item 14.
Item 14 is the addendum, and there are no addendums today.
Item 15.
Item 15 is executive session, and there is no request for executive session.
We are adjourned.